Next item on the agenda is item number four, pension reform update. It was going to give a chance for our professional city staff and the consultant hire to give their analysis on the proposed pension initiative at the request of a few of my members of the council, as well as the fact that I think there is a flight to catch. I hope, did Dan already have to leave?
No.
You're there, okay, good. And my understanding, your flight is at 6:30 or so.
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Now, you know our airport is so convenient here that you jump on the light rail, it's right down there, but that being said, you did ask to go first, and I will respect that request. So, before we hear from our professional city staff and our consultants, Dan, I did want you to give a chance of whatever testimony you wanted to provide, get it in so you can catch that flight, we don't want to make you late for it. So, please come forward over to my right, take whatever time you need, although you're first, you're ready to rock and roll, I don't want you to miss that flight, I want to be respectful from it. You're visiting from beautiful Utah, I understand, are you flying back to Salt Lake?
Yeah, I'm flying back to Salt Lake. Well, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having me. My name is Dan Lillianquist, I'm a former state senator from Utah, and I ran the pension reforms in Utah in 2010. I've spent the last four years helping other states and municipalities with pension reform issues, and I'm delighted to be here today. I'm also fond to see some of my former folks I worked with in Utah, some of the folks at Chiron who are here today. But I want to speak briefly in favor of this initiative and speak really about what we're seeing with pension reform around the country that might be germane to what you're seeing in Phoenix. The 2008 market crash really exposed a lot of fundamental issues with defined benefit pensions, where we make a six-year commitment to a new individual that comes in and hope that the stock market does well, and hopefully we're appropriately funding those things. And what you're seeing now in the city of Phoenix is facing is a significant impact of that downturn on budgets, and particularly, as it turns out, with some of the reforms made a couple of years ago on new workers. I think this initiative will go a long way to help make sure that pensions or retirement system for new workers, if the council approaches it the right way, can be more stable than perhaps the existing Tier Two system. To be honest and be candid, the Tier Two system that I see, that this council a couple of years ago enacted, and I think in kind of dire straits, is probably one of the worst for workers that I've seen around the country. Not only are they bearing, and will be bearing, next year eighteen percent of their payroll to pay for not only their defined benefit, but also the liabilities of future, or of the existing Tier One workers. In addition, they also bear the downside risk of future market downturns that really kind of take their control out of their own retirement out of their hands. The really, and I know I'm almost out of time, but I think the real important thing to do, if you're looking at true lasting pension reform, is to make sure that you're capping the liabilities as much as you can, to make sure that new contributions for new workers are predictable and fair for both the employer and the employee, and really treating the situation we're in with pensions kind of like a chemical spill. If you come across a chemical spill, the first thing you do is you cap the spill, and then you work overtime to clean it up. And my recommendation to you is, I think this initiative can put the council in a good position going forward to design a defined contribution system that not only meets the requirements for new workers to have retirement security, but also to make sure that the city of Phoenix does not find itself in dire budget straits again with respect to pensions.
Thank you very much, Senator, for taking the flight down here. I know you got to catch a flight. Vice Mayor had a question for you.
Sure. You mentioned the city report earlier, I'm just curious your thoughts, and I know it's a little awkward because they haven't presented yet, so for the audience, but I know you've had a chance to review it, and I'm sorry about the timing that makes you have to go first, but if you'd give your thoughts, we'd appreciate that very much.
Well, I have a great deal of regard for Chiron, and the report on the initiative, I think, is probably accurate. We use Chiron to come in and assess what we did in Utah, and they did a fantastic job. In fact, I think it's the same folks from Chiron, yeah, good to see you again, and they're professionals. I think the challenge with the Chiron report is not necessarily, I mean, there's a portion, obviously they're focused on one portion of the initiative, and there's another cost savings that comes from the other side, and I think that's important to point out. But what I think their report really does is demonstrate just how damaging to new workers this new Tier Two program is. And I, you know, I don't want to play armchair quarterback here, but this is complex stuff, and I admit that, but it looks like from the report, a new employee would do better with a one percent contribution from the city under a defined contribution system than they would under the Tier Two program. You have another market downturn on the Tier Two program, then the employee who is already subsidizing the losses from the existing Tier One system will actually be paying more into the system than the normal cost of their existing benefit. And that, I think, is, creates some stability problems, it will certainly create employee, you know, recruiting and retention problems for the city. I would also say is the different packages, I have looked at Package A and Package B. Package A of the $145 million in savings that are projected on Package A, $75 million of that $45 million is also a cut to existing Tier Two and soon to be, or whatever, Tier Three workers, because it basically says that if you leave state, or leave city employment in the first ten years, or however long the vesting period is, that you get a two percent return on your money. And basically, anything above that goes back to the plan. I don't know of any place that does it like that, particularly with such a low benefit for the new Tier Two workers. So, I just look at this, I think this is going to create long-term recruiting and retention issues for the city. And personally, I think it's a lot cleaner to move to a defined contribution style system that you folks can actually design in a way that provides income and retirement security, as long as that system does three things, there's an adequate employer contribution under that defined contribution, there is professional management, and honestly, I think, you know, COPERS or somebody could actually professionally manage these defined contributions, this defined contribution system, there's annuitization upon retirement, so that when somebody retires, they can take their money and get a check every month the rest of their, the rest of their lives, and that there's no borrowing against these plans. So, there's a way, there's ways to define contribution systems that can both meet your needs as a city and also retirement security for your folks. Anyway.
Other quick questions? Councilwoman Williams, please, of course.
In the very beginning, you mentioned that you have been involved with other cities and county, states, whatever.
Yeah.
Is this a very similar proposal to what you've experienced, or is it much different?
Yes, so the initiative proposal, I think, actually provides a good deal of flexibility for the city in actually how to design a defined contribution system, which I think is unique as far as initiatives go, sometimes they're too prescriptive, but I look at it and think it gives you a good deal of flexibility on designing a system that will really work for your folks going forward. But there is a real, the states and the cities that are actually doing well are the cities that truly look at this and say, you folks are in this, in this chamber today because of the decision, talking about this because of decisions that were made thirty years ago. And same as I as a legislator, these are not problems that you caused. And in looking at that, it's certainly not the problems of the people who are in the system that caused this either. I mean, the confluence of circumstance would lead to where we are, but the states and cities that are actually putting themselves in a long-term financially stable situation where they're not counting on projections about what the world's going to be like sixty years from now, are the ones that are moving to defined contribution style systems with very predictable costs, and again, with those protections around professional management, no borrowing, annuitization, et cetera, that are good for workers.
Other questions for the Senator before he has to sneak out? Councilman Gago, please.
I want to make sure I heard you correctly, it sounded like you said that we would hurt our recruiting and retention if we lowered the rate we pay towards employees who left the system before vesting, and that seems counterintuitive to me.
So, my main argument is, on Tier Two, it's going to be very, really difficult for somebody who's coming into state work and coming in, we see this problem all over. When systems try to shift costs to new employees, your people are going to be coming to the system in 2018, new people coming in, and they're going to be required to pay eighteen percent of their pay right out of the gate for retirement. That's going to be very difficult for you unless you're increasing wages substantially to recruit and to retain people. The Package A benefit on top of that penalizes the people who actually do come, because when they actually do come, and if they leave, then they only get a two percent return on their money, leaving the rest of it with the city. That penalizes anybody who's looking to come and work for a period of four or five years and then move on to something else, and I think it's exceptionally harsh, given what I've seen everywhere else.
But it would seem it would incentivize them to stay if we're making it less generous to leave.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, because think about the other flip side of this. Under the Tier Two system, when an individual in a Tier Two system is bearing the costs of the Tier One losses, so say you have another crash in the next few years, the Tier One employees have basically have their retirement guaranteed by additional costs that go to the Tier Two employees, and maybe the Tier Two employees, their contribution rates are in the mid twenties, and they don't feel like they can afford to stay, and then get penalized when they try to leave. It's really kind of exacerbates an already tough situation. So, I mean, that's, that's, if you're looking for long-term retention, I haven't seen any other state or municipality, except for maybe with the exception of San Jose, and that's fairly new, and we'll see if it works, that says, hey, new employees, if there's another market loss, you've got to pay not only half of the amortization expense for those losses, you've got to pick them up for all the guys who were before you. Typically, those are liabilities that come back to the employer and not the employee. So, anyway.
Other questions for the Senator? All right, go catch a flight.
Thank you so.
Councilman DiCiccio, please.
So, basically, with the analysis you've done across the country, the, when you start raising the payment that the employee pays, it becomes a discouragement from employment then.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things that I've been told is that it's being done because the current employees are fixed at a five percent, someone's got to pay for them. So, these new employees are now being required to pay for employees that are currently working at the city of Phoenix. That's really what it's about.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, I understand that, I look, this is tough, you guys are in a tough budget situation.
When, if I could ask Staff Two, when did the effects of the last pension reform take place, what date, and when did that come into play?
Mayor, Councilman DiCiccio, the July 1 of 2013 is when the new tier took effect. The snapshot for sick leave took effect in the prior year.
And just as a perspective, have you seen any other city within one year's time come back and want to redo the whole thing? I mean, if you think about it, to show you how bad it must have been for you, for us to even be doing this right now, to have everybody here assembled to talk about it again, when the fix-all already came in place, have you seen any other city address it with the council? Say, hey, I think we screwed up?
Yeah, sure, yeah, other folks, you know, Kansas passed a reform last year, and they realized they probably did it wrong, and came back and revised it. You know, we've had Nebraska pass a reform years ago and came right back and revised it.
Revised it.
These are tough, tough issues, and I don't want to simplify them to the point where they're not going to be tough, they're going to be tough. When a defined benefit system is in place, it really is the employer that is guaranteeing these systems. And what we realized in Utah, even though we always paid our full freight, every time we paid the full actuarial contribution, 2008 blew a thirty percent hole in our pension fund overnight. That required basically ten percent of our, that will require, is requiring, ten percent of our general fund spending for twenty-five years to pay for that one year, and that was because of the way the structure worked. And so, we said at that point, our goal is, let's make sure that we're not putting the future Utah legislature thirty years from now in the same boat, let's find a way to truly, truly cap our liabilities, and then let's work overtime to clean it up. My concern here is that with the Tier Two, a lot of that cleanup work, in fact, the majority of it, I think is going to be really tough for your new employees to swallow. The good news is, only a handful of them are in this new system, and I think the initiative allows them to opt into the other, into the initiative.
So, you've seen other governmental agencies try to fix something that they saw was broken and didn't work?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, this is tough stuff.
So, Phoenix is not alone on that.
Yeah, Phoenix is not alone on that, and by no means is this an indictment on the council. These are tough, tough issues, so, thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to fly down. Of course, yep. Have a safe flight back to Utah. By the way, my wife is from Colville.
Oh, great.
And she is a ute.
Oh, is she, I'm a cougar.
Are you a B-Y-U guy?
Yeah, I'm a B-Y-U guy.
Sorry about that.
Again, sincerely, thank you.
Good to see you, thank you for coming down. Okay, now I'm going to hand it to Rick Neymark, our deputy city manager, who has been overseeing our, the process to analyze the proposed initiative. We have hired consultants to provide information to us about cost issues with the initiative, so we'll hand it over to you now, go through that, and then we'll go also have a discussion about A and B, and whether it's as I or the council to even pursue A and B either further. Mr. Neymark.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to apologize in advance, we have a large number of actuaries in the room, so most of the presentation will be done by them, and I think it's probably best that it's done by them, but actuarial talk is sometimes complex and can put you in a little bit of a daze. But let me start by just summarizing where we are. As was mentioned, significant pension reform has already occurred here at the city of Phoenix, thanks to your leadership and approval of the voters. However, both prior to and during the budget process, many of you and some members of the public continue to express concern about COPERS and PSPRS, and what's going on with pension costs, contribution rates, and funded ratios, those continue to present challenges to us. And in fact, part of that has to do with the fact that most pension reform savings come later on in time, and we also made assumptions changes to prepare for upcoming accounting standards changes, which have increased some of the costs that we have to contribute as well. So, in attempting to address those challenges, the city council approved a contract with Buck Consultants to study the local and national pension reform trends, and look at some different options that could be considered for pension reform. And then we also contracted with the Segal Company, which had already built a model of our system from our prior pension reform efforts, so that they could analyze the financial impact of any of the options that might have been developed. So, I'd like to introduce Charlie Chittenden and David Driscoll from the Buck Company. They're going to walk you through a brief presentation, and then also, we have people here to answer any questions about some of the information that we provided in your packet in terms of cost of the initiative, or cost of these plans, or various impacts of these different options. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Charlie.
Can I next?
Oh, I'm sorry, David's going to start, they're going to kind of bounce back and forth to hopefully keep it a little more interesting.
Thank you. We are going to cover.
No, all right, I'm audible now. Thank you. Our presentation is going to cover five areas of interest in the pension reform effort here in Phoenix. We're going to talk a bit about the past and present of the city's retirement systems, look somewhat at national reform trends, focus then on goals that we think are appropriate ones for further pension reform, and also specifically at the ballot initiative that has been put forth here in Phoenix, and also look at additional possible reforms that the city may wish to consider. We start our examination of the past and present by taking a quick snapshot here of the two retirement systems that cover employees of the city of Phoenix. COPERS, the larger of the two, covers non-law enforcement, non-public safety employees of the city of Phoenix, it has about fourteen thousand members. PSPRS, of course, is the system that covers public safety workers, both in Phoenix as well as across the state, with about seventy-three hundred members as of the last valuation date.
And so, we're going to talk about some recent challenges?
Yeah, recent challenges for both COPERS and PSPRS, and you'll see that the bullet points are the same under each one. Contribution rates have been increasing and funded ratios have been falling. For the city contribution to Tier One on COPERS, the contribution rate has more than doubled in the last decade to 24.6 percent in fiscal '15, whereas, as has been mentioned already, the Tier Two member contribution rate is 14.8 percent in fiscal year 2015. So, those high contribution rates are one thing, the funded ratio has fallen from 107 percent in 1999 to 64.2 percent in 2013. Similar story for PSPRS, the funded ratio has fallen from over 100 percent as recently as 2003, to in the high 50s for both fire and police, whereas the minimum city contribution rate has increased to over 37 percent of pay for both fire and police. So, we've had pension reforms, as has been mentioned, and the Tier Two COPERS reform that was put in in 2013 provides for a 50-50 split in the total contribution, similar to the state retirement system, and for certain changes in benefits that generally align the multipliers more with the state retirement system of Arizona. And it is projected that this will save $596 million over 25 years. In addition, there has been spiking reform that was directed by the mayor and the council in 2014, and it changed the calculation of the final average salary in COPERS and PSPRS, generally eliminating items that might be subject to manipulation. And that was estimated to save over 233 million over the next 25 years. Recently, there have also been PSPRS reforms that make changes for both new and current members. You see that listed here, the changes for new hires are generally fine, the changes for current members have been subject to legal challenges, some are pending and some have been decided. So, that's the story with PSPRS.
Looking nationally, as I think our first speaker on the subject illustrated, there's been a lot of focus in many, many states, cities, and counties, and other jurisdictions on pension reform, largely as a result of the large loss that most public retirement systems incurred in the market downturn of late 2008, coupled with the effect on revenues. These things, of course, focused attention a lot on public sector retirement systems. The vast majority of states now, all but a few, have enacted some level of pension reform, and in some cases, that's a matter of tinkering around the margins with a system that didn't need much fixing, in others, it's meant wholesale replacement of benefits as people knew them with new kinds of retirement arrangements, typically for people who were hired after some particular date. These measures have been advanced through a combination of legislative action and ballot measures, as you have here in Phoenix, and many of these changes have been challenged in court, and in some cases, these have been successful, in some cases not, in some cases, it's too early to know whether the legal challenges will be successful or not. With respect to urban pension reform in the U.S., there are a handful of examples that may be of interest here. Last year, in the city of Cincinnati, Ohio, a ballot initiative was put forth that would have resulted in the enrollment of all future new hires in that city in a defined contribution plan. That measure went down to defeat at the ballot box. San Diego, a measure was put forth that would require enrollment of new city hires in a defined contribution plan, that was approved by the voters, it is under legal challenge, the full outcome of which is not yet clear. San Jose in 2012 had a ballot initiative that resulted in changes to a defined benefit plan that made its benefits, on the whole, somewhat less generous, that was approved. Some aspects of that, of that particular ballot item, though, have been overturned upon judicial review. In thinking about all the different choices that a city, or state, or county would have in reforming, quote unquote, its pension plan, we think it's important to focus on what's really important and what the goals are. Different people approach this from different points of view, but we think that these five goals are ones that everybody who approaches this with good intentions could agree are important. One is obviously to create cost savings. The second is to implement best practices. We believe that if you look at what has worked well and what hasn't worked well in a lot of different jurisdictions, you can draw some very informative conclusions about what ought to be considered in pension reform actions, and what really probably doesn't invite imitation. The third, of course, is to attract and retain employees. We've heard some comment here about the extent to which current Tier Two benefits affect Phoenix's ability to do that, and obviously, to the extent that further reforms are considered, attraction and retention of employees is an important aspect of that consideration. Fourth is really to avoid litigation. Nobody, I think, thinks that litigation is a good use of the city's resources, and to the extent that pension reform legislation or ballot initiatives are put forth that are litigation-proof, or seem largely litigation-proof, we think that's preferable to the alternative. And finally, the, a very important aspect of pension reform is not just to cut costs, but to improve funding positions. Rating agencies are focusing with increasing intensity on the extent to which cities fund their pension plans, and new GASB standards have been enacted that focus more attention on the actual funded status of a plan, as opposed to older GASB standards, which focus more on the practice of funding pension plans.
And now, we're going to talk about the ballot initiative, and the slide that David just showed about the goals for pension reform, we're going to measure the ballot initiative, Package A and Package B, against those goals, to give you an idea of how they stand up. As you know, there's a ballot initiative scheduled to go to the voters November 4, which would establish a defined contribution plan, and the city could put in a contribution of up to eight percent. Current members would also be affected by the ballot initiative, although it's primarily aimed at new hires, but the city, current city members who participate in COPERS and stay there and want to have had contributions from the city to other plans would not be allowed to receive those contributions anymore, because the ballot initiative restricts city contributions to one plan. It also bases the final average salary on...
Mayor?
Councilman?
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Are you referring to deferred comp?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the 401A, 457, and PEHP plans specifically. It would base final average salary on five years and include only base pay, and members would be allowed to go into the defined contribution plan if they didn't want to stay in COPERS as it is now, and we do forecast that Tier Two members would do just that. We have, our brother actuaries at Chiron have estimated that the initiative would entail additional costs of $390 million over 20 years, assuming that the city makes contributions of five percent of pay. So, that's the ballot initiative scorecard, which shows creating cost savings didn't happen, it turned out the other way in terms of costs. It is not really considered best practice to have a defined contribution-only system for employees in the governmental sector, partly because it isn't the norm, you don't accrue sufficient benefits over the usual career of public sector employees, and because of the investment risk that employees would be taking on.
Mayor, I'm sorry to keep interrupting.
Of course, Councilman.
Back up just a little bit, you talked about the cost savings.
Yes.
Did you take into consideration deferred comp on that?
We should probably bring up the, we did not. The answer is no.
Why?
Sorry. Rick?
Let me make sure I got your question.
If you're not going to be paying it, why isn't there the savings?
Oh, oh.
He didn't, he didn't sound like there was that much savings, so I was just curious.
If they're not going to be paying what, I'm sorry?
The city's not paying into deferred comp.
Oh, so I can explain that. So, the deferred comp payments that the city makes currently are part of compensation packages that are negotiated under our meet and confer ordinance, and are currently part of existing employee contracts for ninety-plus percent of our employees. So, if that element were not allowed to be paid, we'd have to go back to the bargaining groups, reopen the contracts, and essentially find a different place to put that element of their package.
Potentially salary?
Salary or some other benefit, unless the mayor and council decided to lower compensation, which you just went through the process.
which you just went through the process of negotiating, and they have contracts for two years which have a certain compensation level in them.
Mayor?
I'm sorry to keep interrupting.
Just a follow-up on that.
Councilman?
Who made the decision to not include it? I mean, who was the entity, or what was the group that said, "We don't want to include deferred comp" in the analysis?
So this analysis was done at the request of the COPERS board, and the COPERS board was focused on the impact of the initiative mainly on the pension system itself, and trying to understand the real impact on costs for the plan sponsor, which is the city. Because those items are subject to contract, and because they're subject to the meet-and-confer ordinance, the board did not feel it was appropriate to assume that the council would reduce employee compensation under the meet-and-confer ordinance.
So who is the COPERS board? What is it made out of?
The COPERS board is made up of both elected members, who are elected by the employees of the city, a retiree representative, a citizen representative, and some ex-officio members. I sit on that board as an ex-officio representative of the city manager.
How many members are on that board?
I don't remember the number. I'm going to say nine.
Nine. Is there anybody that's not a member or a part of the city of Phoenix pension plan?
Yes, there is a citizen representative.
One out of nine?
Yes.
And none of us see this as a conflict of interest or a problem when they're giving directions for reports?
Mayor, Council-
Be presented to the council and make assumptions that the council's supposed to be making.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, this report on cost was done for the board at the request of the board. The board has a fiduciary responsibility for the system, and the board felt that it was most appropriate to make assumptions for the costing that were accurate, and didn't assume that the mayor and council would do things that violated a contract, or that assumed something would come to fruition if it is legally unlikely to happen. If the mayor and council want to direct that somebody do some additional analysis, that you're free to do that. This was done by the board at their request, and I felt it was appropriate to share it with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understand.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, I would also just add, as we all just went through labor contract negotiations, deferred compensation is considered by our labor groups as part of compensation, so it's not something we can just arbitrarily remove or add. So it really is bound into our contracts with our labor groups, and so I agree that it is important not to assume that that cost goes away.
But do you, I mean, does anybody else in this room, or in the viewing audience out there, not see the conflict of interest built into this, where people are making decisions on their own retirement plans, making decisions of whether to include facts and information that this council would have to make a determination on? Why not include it in there, and then let us make that determination? Assuming with this elected body, elected by the public, is going to have, just making those assumptions of what we believe and what we don't believe is just one more problem that we've had throughout this entire debate.
All right, thank you, Councilman. So I think we're going to go through the rest of the presentation. There's plenty of time for additional comments or questions.
Clear.
Councilor Vice Mayor, do you have a specific question?
I do, to this point. I guess my issue with this is, I don't think the analysis accurate, though it may be, for one part. It should have at least had an asterisk adding in, "Oh, by the way, we took this part out." I don't think that was a decision, frankly, for the board to make on our behalf. We wouldn't have this information if we weren't asking these questions right now. I'll leave it to others to judge who's conflicted or so forth, but I was talking to Dustin Gardner with Republic today. I do believe now you leave yourself open to this. This becomes a discussion. You left out a multimillion-dollar, hundreds of million dollars, whatever thing, just sort of arbitrarily without adding any analysis. I wouldn't say this is representative. The scorecard that you got up there, I wouldn't say is representative of all the possibilities, because we could change this. If the contracts are sacrosanct, then, but two years from now, we'll have new contracts starting. We could change this, going into new contracts, correct? I mean, and we should have that information available to us to make an informed decision, and it was rather arbitrarily decided we wouldn't do that.
That's the question.
But we could, we could change it, right, in the next contract? Let's assume we can't now, but we could in the future.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes, the council, although we negotiate these contracts, as you remember, through the process, so that is within the council's purview to direct the city manager to negotiate those things. I think the important thing here is, it's currently part of the entire compensation package, and reducing it would mean a reduction in compensation if it were not made up in another area. If it were made up in another area, then it's not savings to the city's bottom line.
All right, I'm going to ask, we have, continue with the presentation, obviously, we have plenty of time for Councilors.
Can I just get one last follow-up if I could, Mayor?
Did you, Councilor, do you have a question? Because I know, we have plenty of time to make any points you want to make later on.
No, no, no.
If you have a question, if there's a question, go ahead.
I mean, I'm shocked by this, quite frankly. I got a heads-up early on from my chief of staff who told me that this was what it was. I'm glad you put it on the record. But I would also, in this presentation, tell us everything that you left out that we should know. So don't only tell us what you put in, but tell us what you've left out of this discussion. I'd like to know that while you do the presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, let's continue with the presentation, then we'll have additional time for council questions and comments. Please.
Very well. The, having examined the ballot initiative, we move on to an examination of additional pension reform proposals that the city may wish to consider. One is the one that has been described as Package A, and this takes the form of additional reforms or changes to COPERS. For new hires only, Package A would implement the following changes. It would change the salary averaging period from three years to five years. It would impose a cap of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on annual salary that is considered for pension purposes. It would revise the COLA provided under the plan to be a self-funded COLA, which is to say, there would be an actuarial reduction made that was sufficient to fund a modest year-to-year increase in the income of pensioners who retired from the system, and it would end the practice of granting service credit for accumulated sick leave in the calculation of retirees' benefits. For all COPERS members, both future and current, it would reduce the future interest credits on accumulating employee contributions to two percent. As was noted earlier, this affects people who leave the system before they qualify for retirement benefits, and it would codify the spiking reform that has been approved already by the city council, and include it in the city charter. Our brother and sister actuaries at the Siegel Company estimate that this package would result in savings of a hundred and forty, six million dollars over twenty years. And in terms of scorecard, we do think that this package has a lot to be said for it. Obviously, it creates cost savings. The changes made to benefits are those that we believe could be considered best practices in terms of the efficacy that they bring to the pension reform effort. They enhance the ability of the system, we think, to attract and retain employees, because they put forward a competitive package of benefits, while eliminating some of the things that are driving the development of the large employee contribution rates that have been referred to earlier. Because the changes here really are ones that apply prospectively and almost completely to new employees, we believe this minimizes the chance of reform-related litigation, and certainly, since it's part of COPERS, reduces benefits, but still leaves the system subject to a well-defined funding policy. It augurs well for the improvement of the funding position of COPERS. Charlie will now talk to you about Package B.
Councilman Gates had a quick question.
Just a quick question on that. That calculation of a hundred, I think it was a hundred and forty-six million?
Yes.
Now, that assumes, because I think you earlier said that if the initiative were to pass, you anticipated that folks would move into, wait, now this only applies to new employees?
That's right.
Okay. And if the, just trying to get everything to line up here. So if the initiative were to pass, you would anticipate, all those, the new employees would be under the new system, so this wouldn't apply to them?
That's right.
So that number would be different? Okay.
I also have a question. Could you go back to the previous slide?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so if we were to cap the pensionability number, particularly for people at the higher-income levels, at the high levels, highest levels of the organization, using the same theory that if we were to eliminate deferred comp, we'd have to make it up as a practical matter, do we account for the fact that if we cap pensionability, we'd have to make up other income, if you will, for those folks who would have their pension capped? Do we kind of figure a number for that as well? We may want to look at, look, I think it's, to really compare apples to apples, I think it's the analysis by COPERS board and by our city manager on the issue of the practical advice about how we should cost out deferred comp. If we're going to compare apples to apples on that, I think we should indicate that if we were to cap pensionability, there probably would be other income to make other ways to help make up for that decision. So that may be something we want to look at moving forward, if we're going to do truly apples to apples, which I think is the fair way of doing it.
Thank you, Mayor. We did not, we did not, just to answer your question, we did not do that kind of analysis. Again, it assumes council decisions that...
I understand. And there's not too many people at that, at that level, so it probably wouldn't be a huge number. But again, we want to make sure we're doing apples to apples. Councilman Gates?
And just to that point, if I understand what you're saying, Mayor, these, the point about why the COPERS board decided not to put the deferred comp savings in was because they're in existing contracts, and they're already getting these amounts. Under this, this is new hires only, so there, it's not like we're taking something away. We may sort of theoretically what they would have gotten otherwise, but just to clarify.
Councilman, DeCiccio, you had a question on that?
And the no service credit for sick leave, what does that mean?
Mayor, members of the council, in the city charter, there is a provision that says, any sick leave that you have accumulated and have on the books when you retire, that you have not received payment for as part of the sick leave payout, and I'll explain that in one second, any amount left, you can use as a service credit. So let's just use me as an example. I have a year of sick leave on the books. Some portion, I have more than a year of sick leave on the books.
Whatever, it doesn't matter. Yeah, you don't want to...
We have unlimited sick leave accrual. Some portion of that is allowed to be paid out, even still, to employees when they retire. It varies from twenty percent to twenty-five percent, depending upon the employee group. You all have recently put into your reforms that those payments in the future, on future accruals and for new employees, would not be pension-eligible, but still the payout exists. Any portion, so that twenty-five, let's say, percent of sick leave would not be counted, but the rest of your sick leave, your seventy-five percent of what you have, would add to your service time, and it has two impacts. If you're not yet eligible to retire, it hastens your retirement eligibility under the rule of eighty. Let's say you had seventy-nine points with your age and years of service. You could get a year of sick leave, let's say you have a year of sick leave service credit. That gets you to eighty earlier. Likewise, if you already had eighty points, or you already were of retirement age, that increases the number of years used in your multiplier for determining your pension benefit. So you get kind of an extra credit, and it was established essentially as an incentive to save sick leave.
So essentially, I want to...
So this would eliminate that.